Good evening. I want to call the August 15th meeting of the Rutherford County Road and School Board Zone Committees Committee Meeting to order, please. We need to prove minutes. Call on our Vice Chair Ed Phillips to read and approve the amendments of our last meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve those minutes. And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Only thing on our agenda is to continue the process. Mike has done a lot of work and tried to clean these different maps and scenarios up. Before we get into that, there was a request for put together some road miles for each particular district and/or zone. So, and I think Mike has done that. It took a lot of work to put this stuff together. I'm not real sure that it's going to be information that we can use effectively when it comes to this process, but Mike has put those charts together. So, Mike, why don't you run through that for us if you would, please?
Yes, sir. If you look at the screen up here, and also it's your handout that has the big graph or the big chart on the front of it, a lot of numbers. This is the road miles and square miles of each political entity by the road and school board zones. If you look up here, the other name, it's got the entity that it's in, and they're color-coded by district or by zone, I should say, Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3, Zone 4, Zone 5, Zone 6, and Zone 7. The number of county-maintained road miles within each of those zones is listed here. My mouse has just appeared. There it is. Less than four in Zone 1, 223 in 2, and so on. The square miles, total square miles of each zone is listed here. So, you can see the square miles of each zone. Some are rather large, the more rural ones, and some of them more urban ones are real small. And then, under just square miles, is each part of that zone within each political entity. For example, in Zone, in School Board, School Board Zone 1, the unincorporated areas consists of 3.2 square miles. Laverne is 10.08. Smyrna is 15.17. And then, the percentage here is a percentage on each of those zones. So, 11.35 percent of Zone 1 is in unincorporated, 35.39 percent is in Laverne, and 53.27 is in Smyrna. So, you can see how each zone is broken up by political entity. In the cases where there are more than one, and they're minuscule numbers here, I tried to knock those out, but it looks like I left one in here. These were places where there was just slivers, and the computer calculated it differently. They're inconsequential as far as the numbers are concerned. You can see here that there are significant zones as far as road miles are concerned, 223, 310. They have a lot of different road miles within them. And on the next one, we're talking about road miles by zone now, if you're going for that. In the road and school board zones 1 through 7, there is a total road miles of calculated from the computer, 938, reported by the Rutherford County Highway Department. I talked to Mike Williams. 963 is what they have in their books. So, there's a difference of less than 30 there. I felt like that was an insignificant number as far as our calculations are concerned, as far as finding out what percentages were where. Forty-two percent, or excuse me, less than half percent in Road Board Zone 1. In Road Board Zone 2, 23.7 percent. 3, a third roughly. 4, 23 percent. Then, 5 is less than 5 percent. 6 is less than 1 percent. And 7 is right around 15 percent. So, as you can see, there is a large discrepancy here of road board mileages. And I've also got a chart later. I've broken out by commission district even further to show you that there's also a discrepancy by commission districts. I don't feel like we're going to find a solution here because the more rural roads have all the road mileage, and all the urban roads have none, little to none. And the way they're broken out, as far as the commission districts are concerned, it's going to be hard to balance that out and still maintain everything else you want to maintain. Some stats on the municipalities. Egalou is all in Zone 4 with 2.12 square miles, which is 1.22 percent of Zone 4 as far as square miles. Laverne, Laverne consists of road and school board zones 1, 2, and 4 with roughly 35 percent of it being in 1, 7 percent in, and this is not right. Something's off here. I don't know why. Something didn't calculate right. I'm sorry. The square miles are right here. It's roughly 45 percent both in 1 and 2, and about 10 percent in 4. I thought I checked those to add up, and they're not adding up. There's another figure here, and I'm sorry, I did these a couple of weeks ago, and I forgot what that is. But anyways, you can see the square miles here of each of road and school board zones, and it broken out by percentages. Smyrna road and school board zones. Again, you can see the percentages and how they're divided up. Unincorporated road and school board zones. You can see the square miles here. Your more rural school board zones and road board zones are here. This is the chart that I want to show you. As far as the county commission districts, as far as the number of road miles within each of them, there are 1, 2, 3 districts that have over 100 square miles, excuse me, road miles. I'm sorry, my voice is cracking. And then, there are 1, 2, 3, or 5 that are between 50 and 100. That's eight of them. The other 13 have less than 50 miles. Some have none, like 17. And then, you also asked about the road and school board election cycle. This information was provided by the Election Commission. These will renew every four years, except for the yellow highlighted road board zone, which will renew one time for six years to put it in line with Zone 2 of the school board. So, the next election cycle in 2014, Road Board Zone 2 will be elected for a six-year term, which, once you add 4 to 2016, that's 2020. This will put it at 2020. So, these are all on four-year cycles, except for this one for one election only. And I think that covers the data you all asked for at the last meeting. And we also prepared some maps.
Before we get into that.
Yes, sir.
Keith, you were asking some questions and was interested in this. Where do we go with this?
Well, I was just, I think, you know, last time, when they, or when we, when they kind of discussed this, it was, I think we were just, we were kind of looking at, I don't know, maybe population as far as, from a school board perspective. And like I said, it kind of a little bit different. I mean, we'd look at population too, but really, from I guess, the road board deal, we mainly maintain the road. So, I wanted to kind of get an idea of what the road mileage was in each zone or each district, just to really have a breakdown to just, you know, to see where and what or where the majority of them were.
What Mike's put together is current. That's what we have right now. And if we come up with another recommendation or scenario, he can actually put those figures to whatever that recommendation would be. But it's time-consuming for him to do that. And when it comes right down to it, our assignment is probably going to be population. There is no other way to do it without circumventing law, and we're not going to do that. But this is interesting information. As I was looking at this, and Mike was going over that, there was, you can see there were some commission districts that have really nothing, no miles. And there are road board members who have just a few miles compared to others that have many miles. And those, that's a reverse scenario. It looks like the small districts are the highly densely populated districts with no miles, no road miles. And then, you get out into the rural areas, especially down on the southern end of the county, and those are huge districts with most of the road miles there. So, they're the bigger ones, they're less densely populated, and that's where that equals to more road miles. So, it's kind of contrary to what we do with population. And once again, I, Mike made mention, and I've thought about that too. I don't know where we go with this or what we do with this. And I'm not sure we want to look at this scenario or a scenario that would more equally divide those, because I think what's going to happen is that we're just going to get more and more and more and more confused. If we do come up with a recommendation, then we'll run this chart again and see what it looks like compared to what we have now. Okay? If you remember our last meeting, we asked Mike Curtis to put together the actual maps of three different scenarios, plus one additional one, I think that was made with the original committee, whenever it was, last year sometime. And I think that's one that Commissioner Robert Stevens had recommended. And you can see 1 through 4, and the fourth one is the one that we haven't seen before. So, we'll take a look at those kind of one at a time. And ask Mike, if you'd go ahead and pull up the current one. I really don't have a pointer.
You need one, sir?
You got one?
Yeah.
Yeah, pass it back.
Y'all butt on us, please.
I can do that, but nobody knows what I'm pointing at to me. You can see, this right here has brought about the organization of this committee. And what that's done is it created an island for this school board member and this road board member right here. So, population growth has, and population distribution has required us to redistrict, and in doing so, keeping in mind that county commission districts have to be used according to a private act that we have. That was the most feasible scenario that the redistricting committee came up with, and this is the one that was recommended and passed the full county commission. I think the municipalities down on the northern end of the county, Smyrna and Laverne, especially Laverne, was more interested in seeing if there was something that could be done with this scenario right here. So, this is what's current. As you can see, the red up here is, and the numbers that are attached to it are road board members. I think the blue are school board members. And the small numbers right here deal with the county commission districts. We took all the names out of the map, and it made it a lot more understandable just by looking at that. But you can see that, like, this right here would be this person right here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's how we've got these maps set up. So, this is current. And by the way, it includes a new member on the school board, which is Coy Young. Coy just won an election. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Long summer, wasn't it?
It was.
And this is also Coy's last meeting. Since he is, he'll be sworn in September 1st, the makeup of this committee will not allow a second school board member. So, he'll be kicked off of our committee and put on an entirely new one. And I think the announcement of this open, his opening has already been made. And hopefully, by the time we meet again, we'll have a new committee member to replace Coy. So, that's scenario number one.
Actually, that's the current, sir.
I'm sorry?
That's the current one.
Which is not a scenario. It's the current.
That's correct.
I'm getting this, Mike. And if you'd go to, I think, number one, and I think you have a hard copy of that. And where we got into some of the discussion at our last meeting, if you'll recall, it was pretty much how huge some of these rural districts really were. And you can also tell that if you look at road miles, if we were to adopt this one, which is possible, these road miles will even become just really huge, Keith.
About half, it's kind of like that, John. Or half the road miles in the county.
And it might even be kind of good to hold those things up side by side. And Mike, I know you've got some comments, and I'm going to let you comment all you want on this. So, why don't you kind of run through this and just, if you could, kind of capture what are the main changes from this scenario one to the current map?
If I remember correctly, what we did with this one was, we wanted to start out with the three county commission districts that primarily make up Laverne. There are four, I believe, that do total. Actually, five, because some of them, Laverne goes out here in the 9. We wanted to get the majority of Laverne into one school board district, as requested. And so, we took commission districts 1, 5, and 10, and created one school board zone from that, or school road. When I say school board zone, I mean school board and road board zone. One zone from that. We then proceeded around the county in kind of a clockwise fashion, just collecting three adjacent commission districts to make one zone for each of those. This one is Zone 3, Zone 11, and Zone 12, which is the majority of Smyrna, and the Leanna, and the area north of the Lake Communities. Then, coming around, excuse me, coming around through here, Zones 2, 4, and 6, making up one there. And then, Zones 7, 8, and 20, making one there. We end up with 9 and 19 being left over here, and we put that with Zone 17. The middle of Murfreesboro, Zones 13, 15, and 16. And then, the southeastern and the MKSU area, Zone 17, 18, and 21.
If you'll go back to current map.
Yes, sir.
Mike, put back to that if you would. With Coy's election, if you can take, you can see this north and south. If you cut the county right in half, how many of those red dots and those blue dots are going to be in the northern part of the county? Bunch. It's no big deal. It's just the way it is. And so, but it might even make it a little bit more difficult when it comes to incumbency to make significant changes, especially in this area up here that we're really looking at. Because one obvious thing that really jumps out, if you just can look down here, there's only two or three that are in the southern end of the county. And everybody else is from the, what we would call the northern half of the county. It's also a particular, could be a particular issue for us as we kind of continue to get into this. I'm sorry, Mike. Go.
That's all right, sir.
Go ahead.
The scenario 2, we looked at a slightly different clustering of these zones, putting 2/3 of Laverne into one, with the other portion that's in the Jefferson bike area, District 12, making them all of one zone. And then, again, proceeding around the edge of the county, this time taking little nibbles of Murfreesboro and breaking up a big, huge, half the county-wide zone. So, now we have the, basically, the northern part of the county, northern part of Murfreesboro, making up one zone. The northeast part of Murfreesboro and the Ketchum area into one. The southeast portion of Murfreesboro and the Christiana Buchanan, Gradyville area in one. Then, the Rockville, Egalou, Salem, Blackman area into one. Then, the rest of Smyrna, and the northern part of Blackman in another. The central part of Murfreesboro and the Florence community in one more. Again, all of these scenarios have incumbency issues of various numbers, some more than others.
That would do.
I've got those recorded. We want to go over them later. But you can just basically see, anywhere you have, anywhere you have two blue dots in the same zone, or two red dots in the same zone, mean you're not going to have one someplace else. And so, there won't be any representation in those areas.
That's exactly right.
And you may develop some issues there with incumbency.
You can take this one as an example, and you can look, and all of a sudden, you've got three.
Yes, sir.
School board members in the same zone. So, I'd say the chances of something like this passing even out of this committee are really slim.
And I would like to point out that we made this scenario up. This wasn't the case.
Right.
The election caused this to happen.
Right. And we also were looking at different options without considering incumbency. So, it wasn't a consideration for us at this point.
Yes, sir.
We're just looking at different situations. So, why don't you go to 3?
Scenario 3 was very similar to scenario 2, except that I believe this was requested by one of the members of this committee. We looked at the fact of trying to put all the southern commission districts together into one zone, and how it would reflect the balance in other areas. And so, it looks very similar to the other one, except for some slight adjustments, 18, and 21, and 13 going together, and then 19, 20, and 16 going together.
Mr. President, can you give me a cup of water, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That one is also going to have that same issue right here. Not saying it's not a map that looks decently, but it's going to have that, with the school board, it's going to have that same issue.
Yes, it still has, it has the same issue with the 15, 17, and 4, and 4, and 3, excuse me, school board members in that area. And anything that you draw up that is going to include incumbency with it, is going to develop an issue here with these three commission districts right adjacent to each other with a school board member in each one of them. The last one. This one has three zones in Laverne and part of Smyrna. The rest of Smyrna, except for the part that goes into 19, plus the northern area of Blackman together. The Leanna, Florence, and northern Murfreesboro together. The northeast part of Murfreesboro and the Las Casas, Milton, and Ketchum area together. The center of Murfreesboro together. The southeast portion of the county together, and the southwest portion of the county together.
The way that's drawn up, I mean, the way this scenario here, right here is, Meyer and even 3, they have no school board member at all.
Yep.
I mean, if we're going to try to match that up, we have got a problem. I mean, I just don't see, you know, we're going to be jumping around. We, I told you to get, just to get one little area to put together to make a, to have a school board. Now, the road board member don't look too bad. I mean, the positions are where they are, but the school board is a problem.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't the current, you know, school board members and road board members still represent the area that they were elected from until a new election would occur?
That's what we're trying to answer, I think. We don't know, right?
That's our guess, impression, yeah. But that would also be something that the Election Commission and the County Commission would have to deal with and not us have to deal with.
Right.
But still, all in all.
Oh, you're talking about now, for, yeah, re-implication right now, yeah. Yeah, I see that.
And it would also deal with election cycles and other types of things.
While the school board issues are certainly more striking, you know, having as many as three in one zone, every one of these scenarios has road board incumbency issues as well, at least one. So, you know, I think they're incumbency issues on both sides.
I don't disagree. But if you'll recall, the very first meeting, we went, tried to go through why we exist, why this committee exists. And it was to look at, put the current one back up, Mike. And it was to look at that situation that was created. As you can see, once again, right here, and separating, in essence, those, that's school board district. This one here and this one here with this island right here. And I think the committee, help me, Nicole, if you could, but the committee that, the original committee that met, the redistricting committee that met, took that under consideration. And what really restricted them was, their charge was not only to put the populations correct, but to also deal with incumbencies in both of those, in pretty much every scenario that existed. So, their hands were a lot more tied than our hands are. And as we also said, a recommendation out of this committee is no recommendation, or multiple recommendations, or one recommendation. So, we have, we have some flexibility here.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If I could, I don't know if I need to go to, need to talk to Nicole or legal staff here. But when we redraw these districts, let's just say we use scenario 1, and that's what we write out of the committee. When we redraw them, aren't we renumbering them, in essence? Wouldn't that, wouldn't the schedule for those particular zones, wouldn't that come down and say that's when they're up for reelection?
Yes.
That zone?
I'm not sure I understand what your question is. I mean, I know that, you know, if you redraw them, there may be parts and pieces of existing Zone 1 that are still numbered Zone 1, but are of Zone 2 that may become Zone 1.
Are we tasked with renumbering everything now at this point? Like, if we were to redraw the map, and it's like you said, though, if there's part of Zone 2, current Zone 2 in Zone 1 now, but wouldn't we say this is now going to be Zone 1, this is going to be Zone 2?
We would want to leave as many of the zone numbers the same as possible.
Right.
The The fewer changes for the voters, the better. So, in other words, if you have Zone One is now comprised of three county commission districts, and you keep two of those in, and only one of them changes to some other number,
Right.
Then we only have to send out an extension card to the individuals who some number changed.
Right.
You start getting into a whole lot of changes, and it's probably just best to leave it in the middle of everybody.
Right. But in, in essence, nobody's going to be losing a representative on the school board or road board, either while we change this or for a new election. At the end of the day, someone's going to get a new, if we change something, you know, and they decide to elect somebody else, I mean, they're going to get a new member.
The way, the way it stands now, under, under similar situations, I know this is a little confusing, but with redistricting having, having taken place, the county commission district lines were drawn, the new lines were drawn, and then the election commission had to draw the precinct lines within those. The precinct lines that are within the new county commission district lines are already in use
Right.
for voting precincts. Those were used for the first time in the August election, and those will be used for the next 10 years. However, the county commission district lines that were just drawn will not go into effect until September 1 of 2014, when the county commissioner will be elected. So essentially, the county commissioner, for whom each voter had the opportunity to elect two years ago, is still going to be representing those individuals under the old lines,
Right.
if that makes any sense. So I presume that the same principles would apply in this scenario. It just makes it a little more difficult because where our county commissioners are all elected in the same election cycle, all 21 in the same election year, the school and road board zones are staggered like the state House of Representatives, or not House of Representatives, but the state senate.
Right.
The odd-numbered senators run one year, and then the next election cycle, the even-numbered ones run. So you've got a little bit of overlap and potential overlap, I suppose, with the representation when you have staggered terms.
It, it can be done, but it's, it's, it would be painful.
Just another piece of the puzzle.
What's that?
Just another piece of the puzzle we have to figure out.
It, it is. Every one of these are, are puzzles, and, and just another piece.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. District 20 on, on the current map, what area is that?
It's Amityville.
That's Amityville?
Amityville, Blackman.
Okay. And, and really, as far as the, the statement you made a while ago, when, when this, with this current map, I mean, I guess, kind of the reason we're here is simply because of that district. And, and I guess what, this not being contiguous with everything is. But at that time, or when, when the, the other committee met, this was all in all, I guess, the best scenario that they could come with.
Keeping, keeping the population figures in mind, and also keeping incumbency in mind, this was the best.
Right. And I just wanted to like, to tell you now, I'm just looking at all the, all the other scenarios, and I appreciate Mike's work and doing everything, I'm just saying, if we try to fix this right here, this zone, this District 20, seems like we're going to create a whole lot of other problems everywhere else. I mean, I just
If, if, if we get into considering incumbency, that, that's going to be the case, it looks like.
Right. And, you know, and this is just my, my, my opinion. And I think we have to consider that, because the commission, when they did, that's, that's one, that was one of their strong points that they wanted to consider was incumbency. So I'm not saying that should be the only one. I'm just saying, I think we should consider that strongly, and I just, that's just my thought. Um, I got one other question. Based on the current scenario, the Laverne area, this area down here, and I'm trying to point, is there three, I know there's one road board commissioner, is there two or three school board members that represent that area?
I think there are three school board members that represent Laverne right now. Just, just correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
Okay. Three, three different ones.
Okay. And those would be Mr. Holliday, Mr. Blair, and Mr. Nipper?
No, Mr. Young.
Okay.
You're looking at Doug Schaefer's Zone One, Carol Cook's District Five, and Brad Turner's District Ten.
Okay.
It's primarily Laverne. However, there is some in Robert Stevens' District 12.
Okay.
If, if incumbency seems to be the stumbling block, is it appropriate to go after this with incumbency being the first criteria, and trying to separate the map in that manner? And then see where we are in contiguous or, or, you know, those kind of things? Because obviously, going at it for contiguous and, and areas of interest and those kind of things, we've seen horrible problems with incumbency. If we turned around and attacked it the other direction, I don't know, quite honestly, what we would find, but it would be worth our effort, perhaps.
What came out of the, as far as the, what goals we were trying to reach from, from the county commission, didn't we have, were they prioritized, or just look at this?
To, to look at potential new
What I'm looking at is geographically. You know, all this incumbency and other, you know, if you're trying to satisfy who's going to run, run where, represent who, that's going to be a hard task.
It is.
If you do it logically, you know, geographically, it's going to be a whole lot easier.
And I think we knew that going in. And that's the reason that our first meeting, we said, let's ignore that and see what maps look like.
Right.
And then this is what some maps look like.
Right.
And it, that it's, it's, it's staring. And one of the, one of the reasons that incumbency is something that is important is because of the people who elected those people. So incumbency is important because there was a whole bunch of folks that voted for and elected those people.
Yeah, but when will this actually go into being if we, something gets sent out of this committee and adopted by the commission, county commissioners?
I don't think it, it's possible that, that anything could happen before the 14 election, and I think there are some, that's two years away.
Did, did we see last meeting that Mike has the ability to click on districts and show things kind of as a, as we speak method?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
But, and we're talking about looking at lines that maybe would consider incumbency, and just see what that looks like.
Exactly.
But before we get into that, we're, we're, we'll be going in an entirely different direction. Jeff Reed from the legal department, our legal department, county attorney's office is here, and we had a suggestion by someone, actually, that was thinking outside the box after our last meeting, and I know that's a cliche, but it really is different thinking. And, and the person said, do you have the ability to just redraw lines? To redraw lines and not use county commission lines, and consider communities and those types of things? And I think we've got flexibility, however, I, I think we have private acts that restrict us from doing certain things, and, and I asked County Attorney and Jeff to take a look at that, and they've researched it over the last week or so, and, and he's got some answers for us.
Yeah, glad to be with you tonight. Jim Cope's mother passed away, so I couldn't be with you tonight, so our prayer is all with him and his family tonight. But with respect to Chairman Phillips's issue, our office did look into the issue of whether there's a potential possibly establishing a district for the school board or the road board based on lines other than those lines which were driven by the county commission district lines. And looking back at the old private acts, which create both the Board of Education and the road board, both of those acts define the districts for the, for the road board and the Board of Education in terms of county commission districts. So there's two existing private acts, and this goes back to like 1950 and 1916, one was 1947. So they go back pretty old, but, and those original instruments that created the road board and the county board of education, those instruments basically say, well, you have these school board districts, you have these road board districts, but to have those districts, you have to define them in terms of what the county commission districts are. And you can move the numbers around, you say, you know, road board district one will be consisting of county commission district 21, 20, 16, whatever, but it has to be some combination of county commission districts. So if you want to do something different and have some zones developed outside of what the county commission zones are, theoretically, it's possible to do that. It would require an amendment to the private acts, which would require the county commission to approve and require state legislative action through the state legislature to get done, but it could potentially be done. You would, of course, have to meet population requirements and have the same, you know, requirements in that regard, and be within the thresholds as you would in any other zones. So, and I don't know how good your software is, but if your software can do that, that may be something at least feasible to be done. But is another idea, should you guys want to explore that?
So it's possible that we could just redraw lines and get into certain communities. It's possible. It would be, it would get into the, to be more and more and more difficult to do that, and to please the decision-makers of the county, in my mind. It may not. But it, it, it might not even be a bad idea if we have that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Nicole, you go ahead.
No, I was just going to let you get to that thought.
Okay. It might be feasible for, if we have the capability of, of redrawing lines, just to see what something looks like. And, and I'm, I'm not sure it would, but it, it might be feasible for us just to do that. It might make a lot of sense to do it, too. But then it would have to, once again, pass by at least a three-quarters vote or a two-thirds vote
Yes.
of the county commission before the state legislature would even consider it. And then it would have to come back from the state and be ratified by the county commission a second time.
It would be a bit of a process, yes.
So I have a question. Nicole, did you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to, I was just going to add, while it, while it may be legally feasible to do it, just from a practical standpoint, something that you all would not have any reason to be aware of these circumstances, we already have over 200 ballot styles on the countywide election for 46 precincts, and that would be potentially a nightmare for, for the elections. If you start using or utilizing lines in addition to those that are already in existence, for instance, when I say ballot style, in this last election, we had as many as 10 ballot styles in a single precinct. So that means that when a voter comes in and he or she presents his or her photo ID to the registrar, they pull them up in the voter registration system to determine which house, district in which they vote, which senate, which county commission, which precinct, and if they're in a ward or not. We, we just, we use the term ward loosely to refer to whether they're inside either the city limits of any four of the municipalities, and they have a certain code number that identifies which ward in which they vote, if they do. So you would have a possibility where you have more than one House of Representatives member in the precinct up in the Smyrna-Laverne area. We had some where we had, you know, the option of two different House of Representatives members. So the registrar and then again, the machine operator have to make sure that they pull out the correct ballot. You might have a voter who is inside the city of Laverne, who is inside the 49th district, and so on. You might have somebody who's inside the city of Laverne, who's inside the
The southern district up here, or
37th, the new one, 37th. So, or you might have somebody who's inside the 37th but outside the city, or inside the 49th but outside the city. So there's all these different combinations that already exist, and for each and every one of those, we have to create a, a separate ballot for each of those individuals. So if you start drawing lines that are in addition to the ones that already exist, you could potentially have, you know, inside the 37th, outside the city, inside Zone One, and outside 37, inside the city, in Zone Two, or what have you. So you're, you're creating, potentially doubling or tripling the number of ballots that we would have to create for any one election, which in turn increases the risk of a voter getting the wrong ballot at the polls.
Thank you, Jeff.
I know it's confusing.
Chairman Phillips, I have a question. As complicated as this is, I think we've got to ask the question, is it, is it feasible for us to even do this from a cost standpoint? I mean, I, I'm thinking this is going to cost the taxpayers quite a bit of money to even come in here and look at these all and redraw all these lines, so at some point in time, we've got to look at that.
Yep. And, and once again, it's, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that anything will come out of this committee, but there may be a suggestion that comes out of the committee that we feel at least comfortable enough to take it to another level, and when that happens, that decision is somebody else's and not ours. I, I really don't think that's our job. I, I think when it comes before me as the county commissioner, that's my job. And, and a lot of those things will, will be considered when it comes to making that final decision. But I, I really, I really think that we ought to do as much due diligence as we possibly can and, and explore as many options as we possibly can, and just, just to see what kind of, what it looks like, number one, and does it look good? And then what other kind of issues that's going to cause us, such as additional cost or such as the representatives all being bunched in a, maybe a particular district that, that the voters probably really would have an issue with. Nicole? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If we were to not take the incumbency into consideration right now,
Right.
and we just went straight changing things, how it looked the best, you know, for everybody, I mean, the incumbency, it's not going to, all of these people are going to be able to serve their terms
Right.
till 2016, so, or around then. So they'd be able to fulfill their terms. So those that are, there's three or four in one section, it really doesn't really matter right now, does it?
Well, it may not matter to you, it may not matter to me, but it may matter to the, the folks whose districts are really being changed.
Right. But those people are also wanting to be represented as well. There's, there's 270,000 people here. So, you know, if they were changed and there was time, time for that change to be made, those people in those areas could become familiar with the new people in the new districts.
But I'm not disagreeing with you. That's the exact reason that we're here.
Right.
And, but if you look at some of these scenarios that we talked about, we're fixing, maybe fixing a particular problem, but we're also maybe creating more someplace else. If you look at the way Murfreesboro would be split up, it would create, it could potentially create create another whole...
Right.
Objections from a lot of folks, because some folks in Murfreesboro say, I, I want, no, I don't want this person representing two-thirds out in the county and only a third in, in the city. So those type of things would, would come into play as well. But, but what you're saying is exactly the reason that we're here. And not look so much at incumbency, but when we do put those incumbents in some of these maps, you can see the issues and the problems that we're going to have, because those incumbents are gonna object.
Right.
And, and they have actually influence in those districts, okay?
They have constituents.
So it's not something that, that we can't, we can just totally ignore.
Right.
But I, I agree with you. That's what we're here, is to look at maps and see if some of these things make more sense. Theoretically, it should all work itself out in six or eight years. It should.
What I'd like to ask is, who, you know, whose scenarios were these, you know, one, two, three, and four? I know we created them. The last time I thought we created three scenarios.
We did create three, and then we added one that Robert Stevens had recommended before, and that's the, that's the fourth scenario.
Mr. Chairman, would we, would you mind if Robert explains his?
Robert, you have something to say?
Sure. Thanks, Rob. Thank you for doing the work that you're doing, that maybe you're not, be a part of it. But there's not a good solution. But what I keep hearing, focused on here in the now, we need to be looking at the long term. We need a map that's gonna be suitable for growth and where the population trends are going. And my understanding is that this map wasn't one to even take effect until two thousand sixteen, maybe even two thousand eighteen. So the people who are in office now may not even be there next time. So we can't, I don't see how we can consider incumbency if we're gonna make a map one to effect in two thousand eighteen. And for anyone to assume that they will still be in office after the election cycle is the most arrogant thing that we can possibly do. So I think we need to start and look at all of the principles of redistricting that were established, the compactness, the contiguity, common areas, and get a map that meets all of those things. And consider incumbency to an extent, but I just don't see how we can really do that when we don't know if those people will run again for office. They might run and be defeated. We just don't know. So the map that I proposed, pull out Mr. Stevens. Thank you. This map was presented to the previous redistricting committee and it passed, and then some outside pressure came in and it was rescinded the next meeting. But it addresses the concerns of Laverne, it kinda concentrates that city into more of one area, and it addresses the concern with the islands, it makes all the districts contiguous, they're all compact and they just look logical, they kinda keep the common areas together. It spreads out the road miles more evenly. You're not gonna get an even distribution with so many of the commission districts being strictly inside a city limit, but here you're spreading it out five ways. Three or four of those districts are gonna have about the same number of road miles. Of course, the population's equal in all of them. It keeps Smyrna primarily in one district. Murfreesboro has one solid district in the middle. Now, Murfreesboro is growing in every direction.
Yes.
And as we look five, ten, fifteen years down the road, Murfreesboro is going to continue to balloon out into the county. And this map kinda keeps Murfreesboro, instead of it growing into just one area, it's growing out into all of the districts. So to me, one of the principles of redistricting, one of the principles that I use, that I make any kind of decision, is just playing the whole common sense. And look at the map that was adopted, and you've got Milton and Lake Forest and Laverne in the same district, you've got the island district, you've got one that looks like a boat anchor. I don't know that anybody studied, I don't think the redistricting committee spent a lot of time studying that. It was, what was passed was not intended to consequence of pushing the commission districts through. So this map kinda addresses all the concerns that have been raised, and I think it's worth your consideration. And several of the maps that were presented were a lot better than the ones that we have now, so. But if we don't do something about it in the middle of the decade, when the next commission in two thousand twenty does redistricting, they're gonna be working off a fifty or sixty year old map instead of a forty or fifty year old map that we were working with, and it's gonna be even worse. So if we don't do anything now to change it, then they're gonna have an even more messed up map. So, but I would appreciate any input that any of you have. I think that this is something that we should work with now and try to get rocking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert.
Well, I'll just give my input here, Chairman, if I could. Looking at it from a common sense approach, I mean, maps two and four look balanced to me. Now, what incumbency lines they run over, who's gonna get re-elected or what, you know, I'm not considering that.
Is that true?
Yeah. But from a pure perspective of geometry balance, those weren't like the two best scenarios of, of the ones we have. That's my input.
Okay. Before we, before we get into eliminating certain zones, let's kinda take a look at, at, Mike, is it possible for, for us to look at incumbency versus, to put together a couple of maps that would consider incumbency as, as the main criteria? Was it, would it be possible?
Yeah, we can start, I can, I've got it set up here where I can just change these district numbers here, and it'll change the colors out here, and we can create on the fly, as you wish.
You wanna take fifteen minutes and see what one of those looks like?
I saw Mr. Holliday.
Yeah.
I saw you, looked like you were working on something, or do you have any ideas?
Well, before we go there, though, and I think it's worth noting, Mr. Stevens suggests that the map that he puts forward takes into consideration all of the issues that have been brought and, and seems to answer them fairly. Allow me then to formally place this as an issue, that incumbency is important. When the redistricting committee was meeting before the county commission lines were set, I attended the meeting and was invited by the committee to, to speak as an incumbent school board member as they were trying to look at that, albeit at the last minute. You know, we certainly pointed out the fact that every single county commission district had accounted for incumbency. That certainly appears to hold that there was a priority placed on incumbency. Whatever the appropriateness might be, it was certainly a priority. What truly seemed to be the factor is that at the last minute, the oversight of road board and school board implications was noted and, and suddenly was tried to, you know, it was attempted to, to make some consideration for that. The suggestion that it is arrogant that incumbency be considered, I, I would say certainly has to point back at the county commission where every single county commission incumbency matter was addressed, and not one incumbency issue was raised. So I don't know exactly where the arrogance is, but I, I wanna raise that. There are three districts that have both a single road board member and a single school board member, and if we could separate them, their districts two, fourteen, and twelve, we know that we would want to separate those into three different areas. And so we can look at what is adjacent to two, fourteen, and twelve and kinda start the map from there. So is it possible to blank everything out and just make two, fourteen, and twelve three different colors?
Yeah, once my computer decides to respond, I'm sorry. All right. I think I know what's going on here, give me just a second. Yeah. This'll speed up our process here. What I can do is I can go through here and...
Chairman, I've got one question.
Sure.
Is the, I'm still confused on the, I hear Mr. Holliday speak on what our objective is. Is it to develop districts that better allow the representation, you know, from the school board and the school districts? Or is it to address what better serves the politicians and the incumbencies?
I think it, our goal, to my understanding, our goal was to see if we could develop a map that would redistrict school and road boards that would be more, that would be contiguous to each other and not create islands and would make more sense than...
Traveling across the county, yes.
Right. So, actually, I, I think some of the concerns also were that, like a, a particular group, and like the city of Laverne as an example, is, is, it's landlocked, it's small.
Sure.
So why should it have three different board members representing that one area? So see if we can come up with something that would, that would protect communities and, and also make, make a little bit more sense than, than...
I don't know.
Yeah. So I, I'm not sure that we can do that.
Okay.
Okay? But that's our goal.
Okay.
And incumbency is something that I think at some point in time, if we wanna forward something, we'll have to take a look at, just to see if, if we, just to see if we think that what we recommend, if anything, would be better than what we have right now. Commissioner Stevens seems to think that his is better, okay? The redistricting committee did not, and they were looking at, they had considerations that they, that they looked at, and incumbency was one of them. Not the committee's fault.
Okay.
It was one of the, one of the guidelines that was, was set up for the...
One, a question right there.
We're not, we're not restricted with that.
Okay.
When they, when they did their current, when the, the current one that they proposed to do, or what we're trying to undo, did, how many, how many road board members did that move, or how many school board members?
I don't know. Nicole?
Did that move anybody? So they took, that's what they, that's the way they draw theirs, wherever they live.
The, the initial, initial commission district boundaries that were drawn in the redistricting committee, the road and school board incumbent locations were considered as part, along with the county commission.
I got something I wanna kinda add to, kinda where it seems like the discussion's going. When the, when the commission, when they, the other committee met and they came up with the current map we have, and with all due respect to Mr. Stevens back there, he's been, he, he has, he showed up to the meeting and he's come up with a scenario with not being happy with the way the current map is. I, I'm just wondering, the other twenty commissioners that we have on, that we have, if they have any problems with the way the current thing is laid out? And I think if they would, they would've come forward with him, and I'm, all due respect to you, Mr. Stevens, I, I, you know, I know you, you have an interest in seeing what, you know, something changed, whatever it would be, but, and not happy with the way it is laid out, but I, we got twenty other commissioners that served this county, and I think they came up with the best thing they can. I'm just wondering why we don't have more commissioners here, voice an opinion, why they're not happy with the current situation we have, so.
I'm not sure, I don't know anything about what will happen beyond here. I really don't. But I've been around long enough to have a, a guess or a feel. And county commissioners are gonna look at their district and how it affects the people that put them in the office. And I'm not saying they're protecting themselves, but I am saying that they're, they know who their neighbors are and the people who put them in office. And they also know who their school board member is and their road board member is. And they're also gonna listen to what that school board and that road board member says. So if we present something, and let's just say that we recommended, Commissioner Stevens, we came out of this and felt real good about it and recommended it to them, if the county commissioner in District Seventeen didn't like it, his school board member and his or her road board member didn't like it and came to him, they're probably gonna vote no. That's how difficult this task is going to be. But it doesn't mean that we can't come up with a plan that we like and say, this looks pretty good, just like Commissioner Stevens was saying, this looks pretty good, actually looks pretty good right now, but it looks good in what's in the best interest of the county for years to come. It doesn't mean that ten years from now, two thousand twenty, things won't look entirely different again. They may. But if, whatever we come up with, if, if we say, this looks pretty good for us and for the future, and make that recommendation, we've done our job. Whether or not it passes the county commission or not, we've done our job. And as we also have mentioned briefly, it's going to be a really hard sell. Once again, because I sent, I, I think that, that, that there are some folks that say Laverne wants a representative, not three representatives. The other side of that is, they've got three voices instead of one voice. So, you know, there, there are those folks that are saying, they're shooting themselves in the foot. So there are those opposing views. So I, I really don't know what's gonna happen. But I do know that an, an individual county commissioner is going to vote for what he or she thinks is in the best interest of the district that they represent, including the school board member that lives in District Seventeen and the road board member that lives in District Seventeen. And I say that because that's my district, okay? I have no roads. I'm the one that has no roads. And I also have a district that's this big compared to the rest of them that are this big. And that's simply because MTSU is in my district and it's a really highly populated, concentrated district. I can be from one end to the other in two minutes, and, and Commissioner Stevens can't. Commissioner Robert P. can't, okay? It takes them a while to get around. And, and I'm just not real sure that if we were to put something in there that has three incumbents in that same district, that, that commissioner could support it. And, and it, believe it or not, it's, it's, is a political decision, pure and simple. So it, it's gonna be a hard sale. But still, as we've talked about, let's do what we think makes sense. And, and if we talk this thing through and say, nothing makes sense, then that's our recommendation. But getting back to, to Aaron's suggestion, I'm not real sure whether we wanna get into that tonight or not. Have you got something, Mike, put together as we're just sitting up here drawing?
Mr. Holliday, I get the one, three that you talked about?
Yes, sir.
Two, twelve, and fourteen?
Right. Um, the next problem, the next biggest problem on the map is getting County Commission District Eight attached to a school board member.
Uh-uh.
So...
There's no way.
In the issues of incumbency, we hit a roadblock right there. However... However, and, you know, there's no sense crying over spilled milk, can't turn back clock or anything like that, but had the line between eight and twenty allowed for the road board member there, and that's going to be Mr. Steagle, to be in Commission District Twenty, we'd be able to accomplish that.
But he is in eight.
He is in eight.
I'm only clarifying that because he's close to the line, but I know where he's at.
So, I don't know, it's kind of an exercise in futility right there, but...
But in essence, though, the people of Eagleville, Rockville, they elected Wayne Blair. And he's still going to be their school board member until the new election. So, all we're doing right now is just trying to come up with new ideas of the road and school board members. Not that we're kicking Wayne Blair out of his seat, not doing anything like that. So, just because we can't draw necessarily somebody connected with eight right now doesn't mean we're not giving them a school board member. Just means they'll have to reelect a new person the next go-around.
I think it would be interesting to suggest to the people of Eagleville that they would be represented by someone other than Wayne Blair.
They love Wayne out there.
Yes, they do.
I mean, I'm sure Don would verify that, but I know a lot of people out there, my wife's family lives out there, and they love Wayne. But at the same time, the idea of somebody that lives up in Laverne, or at least the Eagleville area and Laverne have nothing in common, and that's the whole thing.
What is the, what is the issue of incumbency and why should it be considered at all? And I think often it gets mischaracterized as protecting somebody that's in office. And what it truly is, is it's the effective representation of government. It is that people are comfortable going to Wayne because, you know, he's been brought up here. They're, they're comfortable speaking to him, they have existing relationships, not to mention Wayne knows the ways and the, and the methods of getting things accomplished on the school board. There are advantages to incumbency to the constituents, not just to the person that's in office, but the experience that that person brings is valuable to those people. And because of that, perhaps incumbency, rather than contiguousness, might be an even trade-off. And perhaps the current scenario is the best thing for the people of Eagleville. If we ask them, they might just say that.
That's up for, you know, the representatives to decide, as Mr. Phillips pointed out.
The incumbency is, we've talked about, we've talked about what's politically correct and maybe what's not so politically correct. But when it comes to, when it came to the incumbency issue, the county commission is the first thing that you look at. The county commission is the political driver for the county as a whole. And one reason not to, to look at, at putting incumbents, incumbent commissioners in the same district is to not play politics. You know, when the state does all of their redistricting, whoever's ruling the roost plays those politics, they do. They have for years. And the county commission was trying not to do that. So, we're all elected as independents, and they were trying not to do that. That's one of the reasons, in my mind anyway, that incumbency was considered. Let's not, let's not make it a political assignment. So, anyway, I, I, everything that we're talking about is also certain things that were actually discussed and talked about. But I really do think that the county commission districts were looked at first, and then school board, road board, we said, oops, you know, there's an issue right there. But then they decided that that was still the best scenario that they could come up with. But let's, let's see if we can get off of ground zero and start moving someplace. And this is going to be a suggestion, but it might not be the one that, that you guys want, okay? We've got four different scenarios here. Let's see if we can take what may be the best one, or the best two, and eliminate the other three or the other two. And then from that perspective, take a look at, at our next meeting, what, if we were to recommend that one particular map, what would be the next step? Where would we go from here? What would we do as far as the election cycles and the staggering and all of those kinds of things? So, if we can pick out one that we like better than all the rest of them, so be it. But if there's another one that we also like, we can kind of look at both of them as well. But it's just a suggestion that we eliminate two or three of these maps, look at one, and then say, okay, that's the one we want to look at at our next meeting. We'll take a look at all of the incumbency issues, election cycle issues, and that's where Nicole and her group can, can really give us a lot of help. They've also got a real busy two months, two and a half months coming up. So, I'm not real sure that they can give us as much help as we would like for them to, but I would suggest that, that let's, let's, if there's two of these things we like, okay, but if there's one that we really like more than the other ones, let's concentrate on that one. And then in our next meeting, make some decisions or try to make a better understanding of how it affects those elected officials, the road board, school board, county commissioners, those type of things. And then also try to understand how, if this were adopted by the committee and recommended by the county commission, to the county commission, how it would affect the election cycles and those types of things. And that's where Nicole and her department and Jeff and his department are going to have a lot of input, okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on the, I mean, tonight, are you wanting us, or you wanting us to wait till we come back as far as the four scenarios we have? Are you wanting us to suggest?
I want to, we've looked at these things a little bit last week with the exception of Scenario Four, and we've looked at all four of them tonight, and I don't want to look at them anymore. It's just me. And I, I'm thinking that some of you guys are kind of thinking the same thing, too. Let's, let's, let's pick out one or two, and if there are strong feelings for one, okay, and if someone has some strong feelings for another one, that's okay, too. Let's take a look at more than one.
Well, you want suggestions, or, I mean, you want, I'm, I'm all for Commissioner Stevens, and I think that's, for my, for my part of it, from where I'm coming from, county, I like it better than any of them. I mean, that's just my suggestion, and I ain't going to be mad nobody else for changing, but I, you, we got to start somewhere. I mean, that's where I'm...
You've heard my suggestion.
Scenario Four is...
Two or four.
And I go two, two's okay.
We also have some suggestions for, for two. Anyone feel strongly?
Well, I guess everybody's, I would suggest eliminating one and three for sure.
Yeah. There's a motion in a second to eliminate one and three. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
So, one and three are gone. Two and four are left. Let's just take them like this. We had number four. Everybody want to see what number four looks like?
Yes.
Okay, everybody? Okay. Who wants to see what number two looks like?
Yeah, I would like to see what number two looks like, just for, there's not a difference in two and four, there is some.
Two and four, yeah.
I will point out, you know, two and four are very similar in their, you know, contiguous and compactness of the, of the districts. Four, four is superior in the issue of incumbency, just in case you're looking. Five and six on the road board face each other, and then in the school board, two, three, and six coexist. So, there is one issue in road board, there's one issue in school board. It doesn't change, you know, when you go, in comparing between two and four, two has two issues on road board and two issues on school board. So, you know, between two and four, I certainly prefer four, but I think in the final analysis, you may find me a proponent of the current.
But let's look at both of them, Mike, and we'll, we'll, we'll put more information together.
Do you want more information on incumbency and election cycles?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you, I suggested, we can go ahead and look at four, it seems like more people want to look at four, so we can go ahead and look at four first.
Let's just do both of them.
Okay.
While, while, while we're putting those things together, let's just do it. It really won't make much of a difference when it comes to the information about election cycles and those types of things, so let's just put, put both of them together. We can actually get down to the point of naming names at the next meeting and how that might affect those individuals who are elected, plus the election cycle and how we'll go about accomplishing all of those things. I think it would be good for us to know that before that recommendation, if it did come out of this committee, come out of this committee, come out of this committee, okay? So, that's what we'll do. These maps won't change a lot, Mike, but we'll just, what we will do is realign the road board, the school board, as if, okay, as if they were in these new, these new districts, okay? So, that means that there would be two in one district, maybe, that kind of thing. Let's just, let's just see where those chips fall. And then after we get that information, then Nicole, what we would want from you and Jeff maybe is, is how it would affect the election process, what the new numbers would be. Mike, let's put numbers to them and...
What kind of numbers do you?
Road board and school board numbers.
Actual numbers, yeah.
Let's put actual numbers to them, and let's just see how it would affect the election cycle. And Nicole, I hope that won't take a lot of your time, but, and Jeff, maybe you can give us some input there, too. So, that's where we go. We've got two scenarios to take a look at, and we'll just see what happens with the incumbents at this, at this next meeting. And then also, if we were to adopt one of these, and one of them might just jump out at us, let's just say it was number four jumped out at us, and then we could ask those questions as to what would happen if we put this into effect in 2016 or whenever that process would happen, okay? Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, I've been, I was drawing up Simone, but would it still be feasible for me to go to him and have him put those together and present them?
Other suggestions?
Yes, sir.
Actually, I went to Mike's office and, and he's got so much stuff that it'll blow your mind, really.
You're talking about a different, different scenario?
Yeah, just a different scenario, right.
Yeah, I mean, I think I was here.
You either get with me if the end of the meeting is scheduled on appointment or call me during the week.
We'll do.
I'd be happy to sit down with anyone of you.
Okay.
You can, there's a lot of stuff that you might, if we're using your, the current map, you might even be able to just accomplish over the telephone, just by moving this around and moving that around.
Right. I probably got the numbers, so I'll get with you, though. Thank you.
And anybody, feel free to do those kinds of things, okay?
All I ask is that you schedule an appointment, just not show up because I have lots of other things going on, and it's better for you to block out a period of time so I can concentrate on you alone.
Mike's number. Everybody in Rutherford County is eight, four, nine, four, eight, seven, oh.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn in a second. Let's... How about Wednesday, the 12th of September? Corey, you don't care, do you? No, not really. That's four weeks away.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be the second Wednesday.
Okay.
It won't work.
Well, I have a board to zone him.
Okay.
It'll begin at second Wednesday.
There's nothing magical about the week before that, but I would suggest maybe we move it back even a couple of weeks to the 26th, September 26th. What, what we would kind of like to do is to put what all this looks like out on the website so that we all can take a look at it, and anyone else can go take a look at it, too, and kind of give us input. That would give us five or six weeks for all that to happen. Is that okay with everybody?
May, I might wonder.
Wednesday, September 26th, and Aaron, is 5:30, still okay?
It's great, thank you for an extra 30 minutes.
It's okay. Now, we've had a motion in a second to adjourn, and no other, nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.